Good idea.
Hey.
Good morning, how are you doing?
It's Tammy, ready?
Tammy runs a tight ship.
Be sure it's right.
Yes, like, let's go.
All right, well, we'll get this thing rolling. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June 25th Metropolitan Planning Organization Board Meeting. Please be aware that this meeting is being broadcast. After its conclusion, a video of the meeting will be available on the county's website. At this time, please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Gracious God, we invite you into our discussions today. Unite our hearts and guide our conversations with wisdom and patience. Help us to seek solutions that honor you and benefit everyone involved. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Scott Black.
Here.
Councilman Lance Smith.
Here.
Mayor John Eric Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Ron Oakley. Commissioner Seth Waitan. Commissioner Kathleen Starkey. Commissioner Lisa Yeager.
Here.
Commissioner Jack Mariano. Chairman Matt Murray.
Here. Okay, do we have anybody for public comment? That's come to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure thing. Pastor Jen Kerwak, Shady Hills Mission Chapel, 15925 Green Glen Lane, Spring Hill, Florida, the Pasco, Spring Hill, Florida, too. I'm here and I have some photos that I've asked. Okay, she's working on it. Just... Should I continue?
Any order?
Just, yep, it's okay. So, I brought pictures and I'm just asking that you consider, sincerely consider, and the improvement of Shady Hills Road, which has, you know, probably very much so underrated for the current capacity, the traffic that, you know, the, there's plans, there's lots of development that is happening, and it's also a two-lane road that is very backed up. It's become very dangerous. We have four schools on that road, and the oldest one being 1974 Shady Hills Elementary. So, it's been a long time, a lot of investment in upgrading properties and developments over time, and unfortunately, we are still in need of not just the widening of the roads to accommodate those that come back and forth between Hernando and Pasco, and those that live in the area, those that are moving to the area, the employment opportunities in the area, but also the pictures that I provided actually, believe it or not, happened within 45 minutes of one another. There were four accidents, and it was as a result of somebody taking out a power line right catty corner across from Cruz Lake Middle School where there were kids that saw everything that happened, and that was like the third accident that happened at that corner within like a couple weeks. There was a young man as a result of traffic being backed up because again, it's only two-lane and they had a road blocked off from the power line being taken out. A young man, 18 years old, he ended up dying to his, as a result of his injuries. He was hit as somebody was trying to let him come across on his little dirt bike, and that's another issue. There is a cultural shift that it has to happen. It's a very rural community. They're used to riding their dirt bikes and their four-wheelers out there, and the gentleman, the young man, thought he had the go-ahead and it was just, you know, somebody going north said go-ahead, and the person going south thought that they were waving somebody off the stop sign to go-ahead. And as a result then, there were accidents at 41 in Bowman because they had to rewrap traffic because it had backed up a very long way. The fire rescue had a hard time getting in, and so it's really a matter of safety for the residents of the area, the kids going to the schools. I just would like to advocate again that we take a good, hard look at the improvements needed for Shady Hills Road. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Anybody signed up?
No.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move on then to our action items. We're gonna skip over the approval of minutes that aren't ready yet, so we're gonna go to MPO Advisory Committee reports, Citizens Advisor Committee, Mr. James Mallow.
Hey, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I'll be brief. Thank you very much, by the way, for letting me be brief. Somebody prepared a report. So, again, I'm James Mallow, chairman of the CAC Committee, which is the Citizen Advisory Committee for Pasco. The Citizens Advisor Committee had their last meeting on June 4th, which we had a quorum. The committee approved the minutes for the April 30th meeting and received a report from Ms. Gorman, thank you very much, Benway, regarding the May 8th board meeting. The committee voted to accept Jennifer Yingling, doesn't stand, let's applaud her for giving up her time. Volunteer right there, volunteer, love volunteers. As a regular member and approved the removal of Mr. Jesus Martinez from the CAC roster, also known as JJ. Additionally, the committee approved the final 2025 LOP, or List of Project Priorities, and the FY 25 to 30 Transportation Improvement Program. Members also received a presentation on the final results of the Micro Mobility Traffic Count Strategic Plan and Data Collection Update, as well as introductory overview of the Pasco County Safety Action Plan. And that's really all the minutes I have. However, I do want to make a comment as the chairman. I believe you're gonna see the Micro Mobility Traffic Count Strategic Plan, and you're gonna see the study that they've done today, is that correct?
Yeah.
Pay attention. Like, I, hey, out of all respect, pay attention to this. We have some very serious issues, and I'm sure they'll be highlighted very, very well. I'm very impressed with this program that they have. I'm very impressed with the presentation that they have. And really seriously, our, some of our roadways are major roadways, especially with pedestrian, but some bicycle, as you'll see, traffic, I mean, we've been having a lot of deaths on 19. Nothing's changed. I haven't been on the road in a long time, but nothing's changed. The Sea Ranch 19 area and those areas really, really need to be looked at. I think we make it a little bit too inviting for people to feel comfortable to cross the street where they shouldn't be crossing the street, and so this will highlight, this will highlight that. I, personally, again, I think the, we have to do something with the medians in a lot of these places. We make it way too inviting for people to stand in the medians. So, if you go with that form of thinking, I think there's been other studies that have done, I think there's other cities and counties that have worked out ways to mitigate people from standing in the, in the roadways or in the medians. If they feel comfortable doing that, they're going to do that, and they're going to walk out there regardless of what traffic is, and you'll see that very, very plainly. It is eye-opening for people that are just, you know, driving down the road, just like we do every day, to actually understand. You hear about these deaths, and it's like, but when you actually see these people walking and riding their bikes, at one point, you'll see somebody ride out there and do a circle around and stuff, and you're like, there's a car coming, like, and they're doing circles in, it's just amazing. So, please pay attention to this, and really, if I was on the board, I would really look at making the, especially the, the, what do you call it? Looking for the word. The medians, not so inviting. So, that's it, that's it. Thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Technical Advisor Committee. And I'm not even gonna try to pronounce that. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, my name is Venkatesh Wadikudi. I'm the Technical Advisory Committee Vice Chairman, opposed to the meeting because the chair is not here. I'm here to present a basically a report as the first action item, we approve, we do not have a quorum, so hence, we only affirm the, all the action items because of not having a quorum. The first one which we did is the approval of minutes. Again, we, instead of approving, we affirm the, anonymously affirm the minutes. The second item is the MPO action items which we decided, or which we reviewed, are the MPO's final 2025 list of priority, project priorities. Again, we anonymously affirm and recommend it. And the second item is these MPO team members caught, presented the MPO's 26, MPO's fiscal year 26 to 30 Transportation Improvement Program for review. And then, we had a presentation from the two consultants which are working on the two MPO projects, which is Micro Mobility Traffic Counts, and also the other one is Pasco County's Fire Safety Action Plan. Those two presentations were very good, very informative, and as CAC Chair mentioned, definitely you may need to pay attention to the final recommendations. I'd more than happy to do any questions, answers.
Questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up is Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisor Committee, Mr. Angel Via.
Morning, Angel Via, Pasco MPO. The Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee convened on June 4th with a quorum present. The committee approved the minutes from April 30th and received a report from Ms. Tammy Gorman regarding the May 8th board meeting. The committee approved the final 2025 list of project priorities and the fiscal year 26 to 30 Transportation Improvement Program. Members also received a presentation on the final results of the Micro Mobility Traffic Count Strategic Plan and Data Collection, along with an introductory overview of the Pasco County Safety Action Plan. The committee requested that micro mobility counting be incorporated into the Safety Action Plan and recommended that data on helmet usage rates among the micro mobility users be evaluated within the plan. Mr. Brian Michaels, B-PAC Chair, also provided an update on Project Red Light, a campaign aimed at increasing awareness for drivers to stop for pedestrians in crosswalks. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, action items, new alternate member appointment, MPO Technical Advisor Committee, Mr. Scott Berry.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
The Pasco MPO staff recommends the approval of Mr. Will Poon to serve as an alternate member of the Pasco MPO Technical Advisory Committee. Mr. Poon serves as a project management engineer with the Pasco County Transportation Engineering Department.
Mr. Chair, move approval. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Looks good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, approval of the new regular member of the Citizens Advisor Committee.
Let's tell it again.
Yeah, hey.
The Pasco MPO is recommending Ms. Jennifer Yingling to the CAC as a representative of District 2. Ms. Yingling has been a Wesley Chapel resident for 25 years and has recently retired from her career with Boys and Girls Club of Tampa Bay, and now does community outreach and marketing for a local attorney. The Pasco MPO is requesting that you vote to approve her membership.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
All right, then, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Thank you.
All right. Removal of regular member of Citizens Advisor Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Jesus J.J. Martinez, a CAC representative of District 2, has requested to be excused from the Citizens Advisory Committee due to work-related commitments. The Pasco MPO requests approval for his removal from the committee.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Thank you.
All right, removed. All right, next up, final MPO 2025 list of project priorities. Ms. Tammy, go on.
Good morning, Board. Every year, we come before you to adopt our list of priority projects for the year. Last month, we came to you with a draft priority project list, which you approved, and now we are just into the finalization of this draft list of priority projects so we can move forward with the approval of the Transportation Improvement Program. At our last meeting, we discussed removing five projects from the list of priority projects. Those are as follows: Bellamy Brothers Safety Improvements, Hicks Road from Bolton Avenue, New York, DeCubliss Road from Little to South of Bridge Road. We have Morris Bridge Road from South of Chancy Road to South of State Road 54 with right-of-way, I'm sorry, designated, I'm sorry, widening of two to four lanes. And then, we also have Overpass Road from Old Bridge to Handcart, construct and, construct over and construct four-lanes roadway. So, we want to remove these projects as they have funding from the Capitol Improvement Plan, and then we will have our list of priority projects all ready to go, and it'll be cleaned up. You have approved that before in the draft, we're asking you to finalize this today. We are also asking you to make, approve the motion of changing the limits on the Old Dixie Project that is in our list of priority projects from Old Dixie Highway. Currently, we have it determinus as racetrack road, it should be Areopica Road. So, we'll go all the way up to the northern terminus. That is all for the list of priority projects. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tammy. And then, next up, final MPO 2026-2030 Transportation Improvement Program, Mr. Scott Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is a copy of the final MPO 2020 fiscal year, 2026 through 2030 Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, which I am presenting to you for your adoption. The project list contained in this final tip is unchanged from the list included in the draft version that was presented to this board for review and discussion last month. This tip document reflects the MPO's short-term transportation improvement funding priorities and contains a descriptive list of transportation improvement projects funded for development by the Florida DOT for the next five fiscal years. The list of improvement projects contained in this final tip reflects an investment of over $560 million in Pasco County's transportation system over the next five fiscal years. Are there any questions or comments about the final tip?
Next, sir.
If not, could you please ask for a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any Go Pasco updates?
Nope.
Okay. Statistic reports and presentations, Micro Mobility Traffic Count Strategic Plan and Data Collection Update, Angel Via.
Thank you. Pasco County MPO. The Pasco County MPO is nearing completion of its Micro Mobility Traffic Count Strategic Plan and Data Collection Study. The study involved the development of a sustainable micro mobility traffic count, traffic monitoring program, and conducting data at four high-priority locations using advanced traffic data collection technologies. The project is led by Marlin Engineering. The detailed analysis of data from these four sites will be presented today and incorporated into the final strategic plan. Mr. Eric
Mr. Eric Katz is here today to present on the study's findings, I will let him take it away.
Thank you, Angel. Good morning, all, thank you so much for the opportunity to present today. Again, my name is Eric Katz, I'm with Marlin Engineering. We were here in February announcing the kickoff of this project, so we are now wrapping up the results and the final report will be ready by Monday. So if we can, I will briefly go over the, what the purpose of the project was and then we'll get right into the results. So, as mentioned by Angel, there were four locations that were selected for data collection. This was to use the most advanced, most innovative traffic data collection possible for micro mobility. So the four locations were Starkey Boulevard at Highway 54, Ridge Road at the Sun Coast Trail Crossing, US-19 at Sea Ranch Road, and US-19 at Grand Boulevard. All these locations were to receive some of the typical aspects of data collection such as volume, mode classification, time of day usage, but then the more innovative aspects of this data collection, which was trajectory lines, tracking behavior, and the most innovative being near miss technology. In addition to the data collection of those four locations, there is a strategic plan, we're wrapping that up as well. So there was a lot of public input involved in this project. So in addition to these four locations, there were a total of 17 additional locations proposed from the community to consider if Pasco County were to move forward with more formal micro mobility traffic monitoring program development. So those will also be in, communicated in the strategic plan. This is a web map, this is one of the deliverables. So on the web map, this will show all past, current, ongoing, and proposed count stations, all micro mobility proposed throughout the duration of this plan. So this is an online web, web map that can be continuously managed by Pasco County MPO. So just as a quick refresher, these are smart cameras, so they are portable, non-intrusive technology devices, whether it be one or two sensors, depending on the size of the location that's being analyzed. But with those sensors, you can detect all modes, so vehicle, truck, bus, pedestrian, bicycle, motorcycle, scooter, all that with the advantages of having one, maybe maximum two sensors out there on the roadway. Again, these will have, they are AI-powered, so after the cameras are taken down, they're, they're uploaded through an AI processing. And that is what not only is going to detect volume, trajectory, time of day usage, but it's also making these very complex measurements with AI predicting potential near miss incidents. So getting right into the results, we are going to go quickly through each of the four locations. So starting with the Starkey Boulevard location at Highway 54, I know there's a lot of information here. If you could just pay attention to the red squares, the total count on a Thursday over 24 hours was 133. That's bikes, pets, scooters total. The Saturday count, you'll see a massive increase in the amount of usage at this location, all the way up to 532 micro mobility travelers at this location. We take a closer look at the traffic patterns, so this is what the Thursday 24-hour traffic pattern looked like. It's, it's more of a recreational or mixed-use traffic pattern. One of the things that came out, clearly you can see that when the sun is down, no one's using the trail. And I think that works with the policies of the county, as I saw signage out there saying that these trails are sundown, sunup usage. So the data is proving that, there's really no one out there unless when the trails are officially open. There are some upticks, you can see around 2:00, 3:00 o'clock, which we consider that to be school traffic. This is what the Saturday count looks like, so a lot more volume, but the same thing, mostly it's people are waiting for the sun to come up. And once the sun comes down, there's really no more usage. And you can see a lot of, most of the usage here, micro mobility-wise, is bicycles. So that's more of the common traffic data collection that you normally see, but this is where we're tracking the trajectory lines. So the red lines represent bicycle movements over a 24-hour period and the yellow lines represent pedestrian movements. So that's what the Thursday looks like over 24 hours. If we look at the Saturday, you can see a lot more activity. And this is really where you can start asking questions about some of what some of these lines are doing, what are they saying? This is where, a couple of years ago, this is the latest we got in technology. And now with near miss technology, we can take a deeper dive into some of these trajectory lines and see what happened. This is the results of the near miss, so over those 48 hours of data collection at this location, seven events were verified to be a near miss.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Chair? It's good. How do you, how do you define a near miss?
Yes, so, great question, I'll do my best to summarize, but has to do with, you can set parameters on the AI, you can set zones. And usually, when we have it on, just looking at bicycle pedestrian movements, that's all it's seeing. When we add the near miss analysis, it calculates all the movements of everything happening within that lens. So the thousands and thousands of cars and trucks that are moving in those directions, it's analyzing all those movements. So we'd put a parameter of a window of three seconds or less. If a red or a yellow line is moving within that zone and the AI is predicting that one of these green lines is going to intersect with that line within a window of three seconds or less, that is what marked it as an event. After that happens, there is a visual QC, there is a human being that looks at the results of these events that were marked off. And then we have a visual, a visual verification saying, yes, there are some false positives that are noted by the machine. So there, there is a post-human verification process as well, but that's my best of explaining how it works.
No, that's great, thanks.
So for each one of these locations, we picked the most interesting video clip of every site. So this is the longest of the four, but this is, tells a really great story about how this trail connection operates at this intersection. So we can please just play and just take a look at all the various movements that are happening. You'll see, this is a very popular trail, particularly on the weekends, there's a lot of groups that utilize this location. You're going to see here, it's not just bicycles, there are, it looks like to be mopeds or scooters or, you know, some of these electric bicycles, lots of movements happening in different directions. And then, yo, there's going to be another group showing up here. Yeah, I'll make sure you pay attention to the gentleman all the way on the bottom right, as soon as they get the, the signal to go ahead. Lots of discussions were about this right turn and how it operates with those that are trying to, mostly people are trying to connect to the Starkey trap, gap trail. I think they're about to go.
Oh, boy. What?
Oh, my gosh.
Lots of interesting movements that were captured. So that just helps, oh, we got, it's not over yet, we got a little bit more activity happening. Yep, one of those comments about the medians.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's so dangerous.
So, yeah, definitely a very interesting site. There was a lot of interesting discussion that were happening during the committee meetings and our, and our outreach meetings about, you know, the behaviors that were witnessed and how it's operating and, you know, discussions about if there can be improvements to, to make this intersection a little safer for all modes. We'll go to the next slide. Okay, so that was, now we're going to the Sun Coast Trail, Coast, Sun Coast Trail Crossing at Ridge Road. So this is a location, kind of way out there, definitely this is for the hardcore recreational cyclists. So on a Thursday, not much, too much activities, just 64 people were counted. Definitely an increase on the Saturday, went up to 282. Here's the traffic pattern, similar in that when the sun's down, these trails aren't used. So mostly a recreational type of traffic pattern both on Thursday and this is Saturday. Here is the trajectory lines of the behaviors as they were crossing through this trail crossing. Now, we do understand that this location is going to be scheduled for already for some safety improvements. So were the discussions about, this could be an opportunity for perhaps a before and after count, where, you know, we have great data now showing how it's operating currently. You could potentially make those improvements, come back with this same technology and then see if there's been differences in the behavior. So out of this location, three near misses were detected over the 48 hours. And we'll play one of those video clips. So an interesting example there, so the drivers don't have the stop sign, that driver was being, I would say courteous, trying to let that person go. But it's interesting to see another car coming right behind that doesn't know that. So just something that was, you know, that was one of the near misses that was detected. So, next site. So State Road, US-19 at Sea Ranch Road. So this is the location on Thursday, we got 125 total count. Saturday was 122. Now, what's different from this location from the previous two is that this is more of a 24-hour facility. So you can see here, doesn't matter what time of day or night it is, somebody is out there utilizing these facilities. So there were discussions in the committee meetings about the importance of lighting, sightlines, and just, you know, having a better understanding of knowing that, doesn't matter what time of day, there's someone out there. So drivers, everyone should be mindful of who's utilizing these facilities. So Saturday count, similar, you know, distribution throughout the day, mostly, you know, when there's daylight hours, but really, even at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, there's people out there. So this is what the trajectory lines look like for a Thursday. So you can see there's some interesting lines going on there, there's some ped crossings happening where there isn't a crosswalk. So these are some of the spurts, some interesting discussions about how this intersection is utilized, this is the Saturday count. And then the near miss for this location had five, nine, nine total near misses that were detected. So we're going to show an example now. Here's one of, pay attention to the right side crosswalk. And this has to do with, you're going to see what looks like a, sort of like a motorbike with two people and cars trying to make right turns. So, yeah, there's an example, you can see here where the, the rider swerved around the car that was making a right turn. So that was one of the near misses that was detected. And then the final site was US-19 in Grand Boulevard. So similar to the other US-19 site, constant activity throughout the day and night for both Thursday and Saturday. Here were the trajectory lines looking at behaviors. This was Thursday and then Saturday. And then this also had a total of nine near misses that were detected for this location. And then, this is an interesting video because I think it really touches on all ages and abilities. So this, when we run this video, you'll see what looks like a senior citizen on the bottom and then a mother with two children crossing US-19, if we can run that. Also notice the golf cart activity. So some riding very cautiously over the street, but I think it really touches on the idea of all ages and abilities, thinking about, you know, being mindful of all the different types of folks that are using these facilities and, and trying to accommodate all of them as safely as possible. So those were the results of the four locations. I would say overall, I think out of all the public outreach that we did, the, the feedback was generally positive in regard to what smart camera data collection can do in regard to assisting in better understanding micro mobility traffic within Pasco County. There were recommendations about doing something like this more in the future, maybe at a larger scale. So we did have a total of eight public outreach meetings, committee meetings, presentations where we went out into the field. We learned more about the different types of technologies that are available for traffic monitoring, not just smart cameras, but learning about other traditional data collection technologies that can also be utilized to manage a countywide program. And with high-quality data, you can do a lot of things with it. So there's a lot of different case studies, I know in the February discussion, we talked about all the things that you can do with traffic data, if collected strategically, at high quality, using high-quality data consistently, gives you a lot of power in being able to make data-driven decisions. So there are many other partners, so Pasco County MPO is not alone in this effort. FDOT is definitely a big partner in this aspect. I know District 7 is very much involved in micro mobility safety. Also, Central Office is managing the statewide non-motorized traffic monitoring program. This data will be delivered to FDOT to be added to the statewide repository of traffic data. And again, there is the web map that can continue to be updated, enhanced as Pasco County continues to work on micro mobility safety. And so, yeah, that's the end of the presentation, all the traffic data, all results will be in the strategic plan. And we're available for any questions or comments.
Mr. Chair, quick question, if you go back a couple of slides, I know Port Ritchie wasn't on there, but Grand Boulevard is in Port Ritchie. So I don't know if that was, is there something we need to do to, to engage more or?
I'm sorry, you're.
So on the slide, we had the, had Dade City, Newport Ritchie, the city emblems, Port Ritchie wasn't on there.
Oh.
But Grand Boulevard was Port Ritchie. So I didn't know if that was, it's.
I, I will make sure it's on that slide, my apologies.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And I mean, the data's great, obviously, but now, okay, the question is, what do you do to try and help? And I know each intersection is going to be a different answer for that. I mean, so I guess, moving forward, how are we handling, looking at solutions to these different intersections? And that might now be a question to you or either anybody.
I'll start by just saying, yeah, our role was to collect the data and to provide to Pasco County. We did have meetings with the, with the county engineer, we know that they're aware that this study is going to be occurring. We will be supplying that data to the county and making it available to anyone to, to, to access.
Yeah, and then we'll be taking, looking at the next round of whatever sites that we're looking at, the intersections, and then going from there. But we're also doing this same streets crawl, a safety action plan, so we'll be going back to those sites as well. So we're doing a lot of planning right now and then we're going to probably circle back to the micro mobility and look and drill down even deeper and go look at that plan.
So we're going to use this data to try and create some solutions in these areas. And I know the one you showed where the pedestrians, and we have some areas in our city like this, you have to take a left, go up and cross and come back, and the people want to cut across. That's normal, I mean, every one of us does that too, so what's the solution? I, I don't know. So it's, in my mind, I'm like, well, it's almost you need to make it, that be the crosswalk, but that, that might not be the answer. But, but I'm telling you, people still, unless you physically cannot do it.
Right.
And maybe a physical barrier, you're going to do it. So, I mean, it's, it's something we need to think about. And there's some areas that I was thinking that really, we need to try and eliminate the interaction with bicycles, pedestrians, and cars. We need to try and eliminate the interaction totally with either an underpass or crossover, you know, so. Especially the one you showed us with, on a, what was it, they were trying to access the trail. I mean, those cars were flying and the people are right there at the edge, so, I mean, just a bobble or looking at your phone.
Right.
You, those people are gone, you know, so.
And that's part of, I would say, the, the, the big benefits of this study was demonstrating what this type of technology can do now. You know, for many years, it was just a spreadsheet with just the numbers, but doesn't really tell the story of what's happening. So that's part of what the intent was with this study, was to demonstrate this technology and, you know, consider using it in the future.
No, great, it was great, thank you.
And so Grand Boulevard, so this is of interest now because we're getting ready to redo that intersection to try to get that, put, I think, dedicated lefts in so it can be approved for golf cart crossing or whatever. So I wonder if, if this, this information should be passed on to some engineers or whatever. And I, I don't know what stage that's in, I think it's already designed, but I don't know if any of this information was taken into context or not, so I guess what.
I mean, you're rather welcome to take the information, pass it along to your.
Yeah, absolutely, if you could send that to me so I could get that to them and maybe get you guys hooked up. So as, as we do that, we incorporate some things in there that we should.
Absolutely.
Councilmen, as I just wanted to say, the, the over, of passes and underpasses, you know, they're, the, the utilization rate of them also. utilization rate of them, and also the cost effectiveness of the overpasses is not really there. I think the overpasses are very expensive. By the mid-block crossings are more impactful. We're getting people across safely, and we have seven of them on the team. So, that's what we're looking at doing more so. And also, education, enforcement, engaging, and making it safer for our community members to cross, and the citizens. But you're right, the path of least resistance is where the line goes. We're gonna dart across the street, and we're gonna put ourselves in harm, and that's not where we wanna go. So, we're gonna do our best over the next courses of these studies that we're doing and plans to ensure that we can have recommendations that go along with them, working with county engineering as well.
You know, and there was one, and I don't know where the people were coming from, but they were trying to access the trail, and I don't know if they were parking in a parking lot over here and then trying to get to it. So, I was like, thinking, if that's what they were doing, we need a parking lot on the other side, so they don't have to try and cross, you know? And I'm not saying that, they may have been continuing on the trail, but I saw some coming up from the west, I guess, heading east. And I'm like, okay, where were they coming from, you know? Were they coming from the house? I don't know, so.
Yeah, we definitely saw some folks when we were doing the site visits, using that parking lot. But also, interesting, we had spoken to some of the riders. Some are distance riders coming from two, three counties away.
Right. And they're just continuing on the trail.
And they don't know what this intersection's about. And some of the locals know, but yeah, you have people coming from outside Pasco utilizing these facilities, too.
Yeah. And reducing the speed in those areas probably is a thing with the cars, too, that needs to be looked at, because we had a real good, there was a good presentation made to us about the speed of the car versus the severity of the accident. So, getting those cars to slow down, but, I mean, those cars were moving through there with the people right there. So, that's real dangerous.
I'm assuming that we're gonna be doing more of these. Obviously, this is four intersections out of, you know, the whole county, so I imagine there's a lot more out there where there's problems. The woman was talking about Shady Hills Road. I know this is based on micro mobility, but she mentioned by a school there. So, that tends to bring micro mobility from schools. Is that anywhere on the radar coming up to look at, or...
We haven't chose the next site of flight selections, but that definitely could be an area that we can look at.
I was gonna suggest that, too.
Yeah, we have 17 total that they're gonna be in the plan that proposed during our meetings, and we can add more.
I think it's great, too. What was the timeframe that was, those intersections were monitored? I know that it was...
March.
So, all, the whole month?
Yeah, early March.
And then the...
No, not for the whole month.
Forty-eight hours. So, with a Thursday and a Saturday.
Okay, so just a couple of days.
I just have a comment. When you do the cameras for Shady Hills, can you just make sure that school's in at that time?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And next up, Pasco County Safety Action Plan.
Angel again.
The Pasco County Safety Action Plan will conduct a comprehensive analysis of the county's transportation system, evaluate crash data, and develop safety policies, strategies, and projects to reduce roadway crashes. In response to rapid population growth, increased vehicle miles traveled, and a rise in severe crashes, the MPO prioritizes plan to help lower transportation-related fatalities and severe injuries. Once finalized, the publicly available plan will align with the county's transportation goals and provide a framework for implementing both short-term safety improvements and long-term safety-focused transportation investments. Catherine Tellez, principal planner at Fair and Peers, will present an overview of the plan and outline next steps.
Good morning. I'm Catherine Tellez with Fair and Peers, and the presentation before me was kind of a perfect segue into what we're doing here with the Transportation Safety Action Plan. So, this morning, I was gonna provide sort of a brief overview of the project. We just got kicked off a few months ago, so we've still got a lot of work ahead of us. But we'll kind of provide, you know, what is the project, what are some of the key tasks, and then we've done kind of a high-level crash trends analysis to help get us started. And then, we'll also go through the safe system approach, so that's sort of the lens through which we're looking at transportation safety in the region. So, what is Safe Streets Pasco? So, we'll be doing a detailed assessment of transportation safety throughout the county, and then we'll be identifying new feasible safety improvements to provide on the MPO road network, as well as countywide on other jurisdictions' roads. And then, we'll integrate this and set up a framework to integrate it into other plans, so that some of those longer-term improvements can get constructed. We'll also be identifying a host of sort of quick-build type projects as well. Just watching those videos, I have a host of just signal timing changes that could be implemented next week, provided the right strategies to help. So, we'll try and be pragmatic and identify some things that can happen right away, and then some of those longer-term projects. And then, there'll be some updated policy information and some educational materials that will come out of the plan as well. So, we've got a number of things that we're doing throughout the course of this project. First one being public engagement. We really wanna hear from the public. We know where crashes are currently happening. We have that data, but we wanna understand where all those near misses are happening, where people might not feel safe traveling. You know, what are some of those conditions that are, we don't quite know about? So, we wanna layer on that lived experience onto the data that we already have. We have a lot of meetings that we're doing, so we have a task force, and we're meeting five or six times throughout the course of the project. We're meeting with the TAC, the CTST, the B-PAC. We're gonna come before you all a couple of times. We're gonna do a couple of pop-up events out in the community, and we'll do some workshops, and we're coming up with some customized safety messages for the county, and really pulling out those local crash stats to highlight. So, right now, we're working on one for 4th of July with a focus on impaired driving, so that should be ready to be sent out in advance of the holiday. So, that's the public engagement piece, and we've got the data piece. So, we're doing a couple of things. So, the first one is we're identifying what we call the high injury network. So, this is a collection of roads throughout the county where we see the highest prevalence of fatal and severe injury crashes. So, those are the roads that we know that we have to focus on. So, we've sort of already been working on that. We've developed a preliminary network, and we're finding that over half of the fatal and severe injury crashes in the county happen about 2% of the roads. So, we don't need to look at everything. We're gonna focus on those roads where we have the highest prevalence of crashes. But then, we're also gonna be a little proactive, and we're gonna take a look at, well, what are the characteristics of those roads? And are there other roads that maybe in the future could be that next high injury network segment? And perhaps because development hasn't occurred there yet, we're not seeing the crashes, but we can help you identify the characteristics of roads to avoid, so that as new development comes online, you can incorporate some of those safety enhancements as part of that development, rather than waiting for those new high injury network segments to emerge. And then, we're also, you know, sort of as part of that, identifying those overall risk factors. So, we know that speed and then the mixture of different travel modes tends to result in higher rates of fatal and severe injury crashes. And then, we'll also be looking at the behavior aspects of it as well. We know, looking at the data, there's a fair number of people who were killed that were not wearing their seatbelts, so can we do more to have outreach to those folks to really encourage seatbelt use and other safer behaviors on our roads? So, once we've done all that analysis, we'll, you know, crunch all the numbers and really look at, well, what are some of the common themes? And then, for those top high injury network segments, we're gonna do some reviews and identify specific things that can be done that can then be incorporated into some of the long-range planning processes, as well as some of those quick-build, shorter-term-type activities. And then, once we have sort of that list of projects, we'll work with the task force and others to come up with how we're gonna prioritize projects, because the list of needs will be greater than the available funding for the next few years. So, we really wanna work with everybody to prioritize where you'd like to see those improvements first. And then, that will all be incorporated into an action plan with lots of materials that will then be incorporated into some of the other planning processes. So, we've got a lot of work to do. We just kicked this off in the spring, and we've been doing some of the preliminary analysis, and right now, we're in the midst of coming up with the high injury network and the crash analysis. We'll be presenting that to the task force at our next meeting in mid-July. Then, we're gonna start an exercise of policy benchmarking. So, what this means is we're gonna review all the various plans and documents that have already been prepared, and we'll highlight goals and policies that really help emphasize safety, and then we'll highlight the ones that could create a barrier to implementing some of the safety improvements, and we'll daylight those for discussion to see what modifications you all might like to see. And then, in the fall, we'll be also looking at those engineering and non-engineering countermeasures. So, engineering, we're talking about all the road improvements, and then on the non-engineering side, it's, you know, enforcement, education, outreach, some of those things. We can't rely on any one approach. It's sort of, we need to rely on sort of multiple efforts to improve safety. And then, in the winter, we'll start to kind of prioritize things and put that all together in an action plan, coming before you all in the spring for adoption. Because this is funded through a Safe Streets and Roads for All grant, the project does need to be completed, I think by June 1st or June 30th?
June 30th.
So, we have in the schedule to come before you all in May, so we've got a little buffer time in the schedule, but that's not that far away. So, just wanna highlight some of the overall crash trends that we're seeing. So, this here is just statewide fatalities by mode going back to 2009. So, you can see between 2009, 2021, there's pretty sharp uptick in fatalities across the state, and this rate of growth in fatalities actually outpaced population growth during that time period. Then, you can see in 2021, there was kind of what we call the COVID spike. Things were just different. We noticed that there was a lot less congestion. People drove a lot faster. There was a lot more aggressive driving and other things, and that's finally starting to trend downwards, and we're seeing that kind of across the country and in many different jurisdictions. But what remains to be seen is that, you know, going to continue? So, something that we're all looking out for. So, then, looking a little closer to home, so this is combined Pasco, Hernando, Citrus, Pinellas, and Hillsborough Counties. You can see, this goes back to 2019 and then through 2024. So, you can, again, see that little bit of a COVID spike. So, you know, throughout the region, about 600 people a year are dying collectively on the roadways. And then, if we look just in Pasco County, you know, it's about 100, 120 people a year, and don't really see that COVID spike happening in Pasco County. But we are unfortunately seeing the numbers ticked up in 2024. I did take a preliminary look at the 2025 data to date, and it's trending downwards, so that's a good thing. We'll continue to watch that. But this also kind of highlights the mode that people were traveling. So, you can see, a lot of it was really motorist, so people inside vehicles. But within Pasco County and the region, we do see a higher rate of motorcyclist fatalities than we do statewide or nationally. It's just great weather, great scenery. There's different helmet laws here than in other states, so there's just some confluence of factors there. And then, you can also see the number of pedestrians and cyclists as well. So, just, this is a quick comparison to your neighbors and sort of the statewide average. So, we can see that Pasco is just slightly below the statewide average when we look at fatalities per 100,000 people, but above the national average. And just wanna also highlight the other countries that are similar to ours, that have been working on sort of the safe system approach for many years. They're approaching about five fatalities per 100,000 people. So, you can see with a, you know, an approach on all of this, we can start to make a difference and have that downward trend. And then, again, just kind of highlighting people outside of vehicles that are dying in Pasco County and in the region altogether. So, a little more than 20% on the pedestrian side, about another 20-ish% on motorcyclists, and then about 8% to 10% on the bicyclist side of things. But you can see here, we're kind of in good company with all of our neighboring counties, so there's a lot we can learn, you know, what's going on in Pinellas County and Hillsborough County. So, that's kind of just a high-level overview. Next time we come back, we'll have a lot more sort of trends and specific locations and other things. So, as we really dive into the analysis, how we're going to look at things is through what we call the safe system approach. And it's a holistic approach that acknowledges that fatal and severe injury crashes on our roads are preventable, and they're unacceptable. There's a lot of things that we can do to prevent them. So, there's a number of principles and then elements that go along with that. So, of the principles, it's really just, you know, the premise that death and serious injury is unacceptable, and there's things that we can do to prevent that from happening. And then, just acknowledging that humans make mistakes. We saw in those videos, lots of humans, whether they're walking, biking, or driving, making some mistakes. Does it mean, though, that you should pay for that mistake with your life? And so, trying to, like to say, make the safe choice the easy choice. So, instead of having people need to, or expected them to walk 1,500 feet or a half-mile to a crossing, because the bus stop is here and their apartment is there, they just wanna cross the street, making that the safe choice. So, maybe relocating the bus stop or adding in a mid-block crossing. There's a number of different things that can be done based on the context. We wanna make sure that whatever solutions we come up with are appropriate for the context. And then, keeping the impacts to the human body at a tolerable level. So, if, as a pedestrian, if you're hit by a vehicle, you know, let's just say a large truck going 40 or 50 miles an hour, your chances of survival are pretty low. But if you're hit by that same vehicle that's going 20 miles an hour, your chances of survival are much greater. And then, the philosophy that responsibility is shared. So, there is a lot of different people that are involved in the design of roadways, the construction of them, the operations, the maintenance, the enforcement side, and then also the road users themselves. So, there's a lot of different people involved, and everybody has some level of responsibility. And that also includes the judicial system. So, when people are continually, you know, given tickets for driving at excessive speeds, how many times does that take before their license is taken away? And then, redundancy is critical. So, there's no one solution that's gonna fix everything. We need to have some redundancy built into the system, and that also includes emergency response. So, crashes will continue to happen, but can we get people to the trauma center as quickly as possible? Because if you can get somebody, you know, on that operating table in what they call the golden hour, their chances of survival are much greater. And then, we have the five safe system elements. So, the first one, that safe road users aspect. So, things that can encourage people to, you know, behave appropriately on the roads, not drink and drive, not using your phones, that's kind of probably going to be the sort of educational encouragement piece of the plan. Safe vehicles, so that's, you know, our vehicles today have all of these great safety features incorporated into them. You know, from this plan, there's not much that we can do to help influence, you know, national regulations on what those look like, but also understanding that we do have a lot of safety features and maybe encouraging, you know, new fleet vehicles to have all of those built into them. And then, safe speed. So, that's looking at, what's the appropriate context of this road, and designing the road and setting the speed for that context? So, if it's a limited-access roadway, you can have your speed, you know, 70 miles an hour, perfectly fine. But if this is a road where you have transit, and you have bicyclists, pedestrians, and you have vehicles, maybe 50 miles an hour is not an appropriate speed. Maybe it needs to be something lower. So, we really wanna look at who's using the road, what are the activities, what are the land uses, and kind of what's that appropriate speed, and making sure that the road design features kind of communicate to the driver what the appropriate speed is that they should be driving. And then, on the safe roads side, it's just, are we, we have all those features incorporated into the roads for safety. We don't have, you know, power poles right next to the road. We're separating users in space and time. And then, I already touched on post-crash care, so can we get the ambulances there, and can we get the first responders there and get folks the help that they need? And so, as we're looking at improvements, we'll be looking through it the lens of what we call the safe system hierarchy. So, well, the top part is things that are the most effective, so removing those severe conflicts. So, there was talk about, oh, maybe we can do a pedestrian overcrossing at some of these trail locations. That's sort of an example of removing that severe conflict. But at the top, those are also the most expensive and kind of the hardest to implement, so we can't rely on those all the time. There's just not enough resources. There's just not enough resources. Second one is sort of managing vehicle speeds. So can we, um, set speeds appropriately, have people drive at those appropriate speeds? The next one is managing conflicts in time. So a lot of that is about your signal timing parameters. Are we allowing left and right turns to cross a crosswalk when people walking across the street also have the, the green light? That was a lot of the conflicts that we saw in the video. So maybe there's things like no right turn on red or not allowing the right turns when, um, there's pedestrians in the crosswalk. Um, and then increasing attentiveness and awareness. Um, so we can't remove the conflicts, just really highlighting them so people can see them and be more aware of them. Sometimes this is as simple as just trimming back some landscaping so you can have better sight distance. Um, and then the last one is sort of implementing enforcing features to slow traffic. So that could be a, a speed feedback sign or some other signage. Um, so they're not, you know, you're not going to use that in a place where you need to reduce the speed from fifty miles an hour to thirty miles an hour, but maybe it's part of an overall program. Um, so that's what we have for you today. And so interested in, you know, questions, feedback? Um, you know, what crash data are you most interested in? Um, what do you think is the biggest safety challenge? So we can really start wrapping our heads around that and hope you come up with some solutions and any opportunities you all might see. So happy to take any questions or feedback.
Questions? Yes. Anything good?
Thank you. That was amazing.
Thank you. All right. Other business, uh, next meeting will be on Thursday, August twenty-first, ten AM on the east side in Dade City. Uh, does anyone have anything else before we adjourn? Is it good? All right.
Return.
Thank you.